...of New Paltz on April 23rd, 2014, at 7:30. A public hearing regarding amendments to Chapter 198-10. The parking of vehicles will be limited to two hours on the eastern side of the Como Plaza from a point of 30 feet from Main Street to a point of 110, uh, 110 feet north from said intersection, and on the westerly side from a point 30 feet from Main Street to a point 220 feet north from said intersection. Any person is entitled to be heard upon said proposed local law at some public hearing. Copies of said proposal of the local law will be available for review.
So before we get to any public comments, just, I thought maybe, I think Sally, this was your, in your bailiwick. Would you want, just, maybe just for the cameras, so people know what law we're discussing?
Okay.
Where this came from, and give us the 30-second history here.
Yep. This law is amending the vehicle code in Village. We have a problem on Grove Street where we have people parking for 12 hours at a time. That is Grove Street, and Main Street is the location of probably, and I don't mean to offend anybody else, but I will, the most socially active community service church in New Paltz. They do a lot of outreach, they run a nursery school, they provide a lot of services that are very much needed in this community, and those people who need the services are unable to park. So we are proposing a two-hour parking zone, and the law requires, certainly, on both sides of the street, and we are also proposing, there is right now a handicap parking space in that area, it has not been ever properly designated and marked according to Village Vehicle Law Regarding Handicap Parking. And then the third part is really nothing to do with amending, but just getting rid of the map that's an appendix at the back of Chapter 198, which is now very much outdated, given all the traffic, so we are just removing it from, from code. So that's it.
Okay. Well, great. Erin, you want to publicly comment?
Question.
Or a publicly question?
A public question comment. Will there be parking meters, or is this?
No, no, just signs, two-hour parking only.
And how would that be enforced, parking just parking?
The parking, our parking enforcement officers will check it, and, and also if the church is finding that people are parking there where they should not be beyond the two-hour parking, we would hope that they would call the police or the parking enforcement officer, and it will be taken care of. But institutions in our community that provide services that are needed by segments in our community, at least, I'm hoping I'm speaking for the whole board, we believe should have the support of the village board to allow the continuity of the services that they offer and that are severely needed.
Over here. Yes, Carol?
I'm Carol Roper, and this is John Batachek, who's the president and trustee at the United Village Church, and I want to thank Sally and the village board for taking this under hand, because it is a problem. People not only park 12 hours, they park all week sometimes when they go to the city. And as Sally said, we have a lot of things going on at the church, and people come for short periods of time, and they can't park within six blocks from our church. So I appreciate Sally's efforts and this, and I appreciate all of you, with John, I speak for John too, and the pastor. We're grateful for your taking this on, and we hope you'll vote to accept it, and we'll look forward to having two-hour parking around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Any other public comment on this local law? Hearing none, I move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll hereby move that we add this-
You all be so simple.
Add discussion of this local law to the consent agenda. Is there a second to that?
I will.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, just figured get that done early on. Will you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving right along to the approval of the agenda, we have a couple of additions, I believe.
Yes.
Katie, do you want to go through yours first?
If the board so pleases, the superintendent of the DPW has asked that you consider adding the award of the bid for the alum, alum sludge, to the consent agenda. The treasurer has requested that the consent agenda have the New York class authorization for the mayor to sign. And if it so pleases the board, the owner of 125 Main Street has requested to be able to break up the payment due for the excess water that's at the table for everyone. Trustee Rhodes brought to my attention this week regarding the minutes. Could I please make an adjustment? The town actually does participate as a sponsor for the regatta, so if it pleases the board, I'll make a postscript of the minutes.
So add that to the consent agenda?
Okay. And to adjust the minutes to reflect that Andrea Russo, the new hire for the village, is specifically the ECC secretary of the shade tree doesn't, isn't interested in having a secretary at this time?
Also to the consent agenda.
Okay. And then-
Not-
No, that's, that's fine. I, I just, Shade Tree indicated yesterday that they do want a secretary.
Jason, but the rest-
No, the, the other two said they did. After you left, Jason brought it up.
Well, let me talk to them about-
We should just talk about it, yeah.
Well, that's good news, even if that just passed away at a meeting.
Yeah.
Any more, any more steps for what we can get to our volunteers, the better for everybody, so.
Yeah.
Katie, is that the end of your list?
Nope. Ryan Barney, deputy clerk for the Village of New Paltz, here as a private citizen looking for concept approval for a foundation that he is appealing to the board regarding suicide, also at the table. And last but not least, the historic preservation committee would like to designate Peace Park as a national historic site. They would, they're hoping that they can be presenting to the board, this is formal notification of that, in honor of the marriage ceremonies that took place in 2004. We have not received word back from the village attorney whether or not this can be construed as formal notification, but if they can, it would be helpful on the timetable for historic preservation.
But I would like that acted on separately. I would like that not to be on the consent agenda, I would like that to be added separately so that the correct recognition can be given.
Well, I think it shouldn't be, because the question was actually whether or not this could be considered noticed, so we did not get a response from the attorney. I, I'll explain more about it, yeah.
So we'll just add, as an agenda item, even if, even if a brief one.
Okay.
All right, and Katie, you're gonna have to help me, because I lost track of your, your very thorough list.
Everything's at the table here in our, in our file.
Okay, so we'll just do, do everything that's new at the end, and, and-
Sludge, well, that's one specific-
Okay.
Jason, since we acted on the 125 problem separately, I would like that also acted on separately.
And move forward, because there's people here for that.
Yep.
As usual, I'll take care of reordering the agenda to match whatever you're here to see, or here to talk about, so you don't panic if you see you're at number 19 and you gotta get home for dinner.
I would like to ask that Ryan's request be added to the consent agenda. Ryan is with us this evening, he is the deputy clerk, and I certainly support and hope we can lend whatever support we can to his request.
I'll second that.
I would agree with that, but my only caveat is, do you want to say anything about it?
That's, but-
If you do, why don't we just say in public comment? How's that? That takes care of everything procedurally.
What else were you adding to the consent?
The New York class, which is the green, the green tab, it's just authorization for the mayor to be allowed to sign something that the treasurer stated he needs to sign. And then the alum sludge-
Alum.
Sorry.
See?
From the superintendent, it's an award of it.
I think, I think this has to be acted separately on by resolution.
Okay.
Okay? That, that will be the New York class.
Which one are you, which one are you holding up, side of the alum?
The, the New York class on investments, I think has to be acted on.
So do we have our consent agenda set, then?
Yeah.
We're pulling, I'd like to pull on item number nine, just for clarification of ours.
Okay. So do you have that, Katie?
Yes, I do.
All right, so we have the consent agenda. I move we accept the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And public comment, Ryan, you want to start us off? Explain what it is we're about to approve by consensus?
It's more or less a nonprofit that I work for now, or that we're starting, since my roommate committed suicide last Halloween. It's called the Adams Hope House Foundation, and it's for alternatives to help that's available now, more or less, because it's not really that effective. Like, they gave him eight weeks of medication, or the medication they said would take eight weeks to bounce out, and then released him after two weeks. And his, I guess, would-be stepsister is 13, and is now on suicide watch. So our goal is basically to raise awareness and to help these people. And we're starting it on the campus with the American Foundation for Suicide prevention, which is already an established nonprofit. So we have a way to do it through campus, but we don't want to just do it on college campuses, we want to make it a whole community thing. So here in New Paltz, I want to get the village on board, because National Suicide Awareness Week is in September, and we want to do it through the village and through the public school system, to teach the teachers how to better pick up on it when kids are feeling this pain, and how to teach the kids how to better handle the mushy stuff, make them feel. So my next step is going to the school district and see if they can make that work.
Great.
But I just wanted to bring the whole thing to the board now, since it's spring, and we're gonna start the whole preparing as well.
Well, great, thank you for bringing that up. And you've already got your approval, since it went on the part of the agenda that is by consensus, so we'll be voting shortly for that. Any other public com, it's Sally, you-
I just, may we add a couple more things to the agenda which you may deem consent agenda?
Which one?
Well, Rebecca and I would like, we have been lucky enough to obtain three bicycle racks, which we would like the board to authorize, DPW picking up and installing them, two at the post office parking lot, and one in our new municipal rejuvenated lot when that occurs. There is a question as to whether one of the two at the post office is promised to Nyquist, to the Park Down on-
The sanctuary.
Okay, but we'll determine that. And the other is, we, Rebecca and I would like authorization to, for the village to purchase five new signs on bicycle rules for the rail trail, and to authorize DPW to draw up the specs as to location, and to authorize Deputy Rassler to work on the wording with the Weinstein and Michael Reed at the rail trail.
So is there objection to adding those to the consent agenda?
No.
Hearing none, consider them added.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other public comment? Carol?
Just a reminder, this, this Saturday is clean sweep day, I'm here to announce that, or not, Jason.
I was too.
I'm sure you got them. At 8:30 Saturday morning at St. Joseph's, clean up in Paltz.
And we'll announce your date later.
Yeah.
Thank you, Carol. Any other public comment? Don?
I have a call here. I have three things. I was approached last, last fall by a young, a couple of young residents in town who expressed that there's not really any place to perform if you're a young artist outside of bars. And the request was to have some sort of a young performers event or day set aside in Hasbrook Park, and I'd like to know what mechanics can be in that, and if we could do that without some large help lay of money for insurance coverage. So I'd like to make the request next meeting, and I guess if, if the board is friendly with that, that concept, the thing would be something organized by young artists in town, they'd have their day in the park, and they'd do whatever they do. And it sounds like a nice idea to me, so I just wanted to-
Well, Katie can walk you through the details.
Okay.
And, and people get, just for the general public, you get scared away when you hear that we require things like a million-dollar event insurance policy. A million-dollar policy costs just less than a million dollars. I mean, it's not-
It's a ride.
It's not, you're not looking at, you're not looking at having to take out a loan to put an event down in the park, but we usually do require some insurance.
And you can, you can request a waiver, we don't always grant waivers for, depending on what the event is, how many people, the likelihood of the park being, you know, damaged in some way, but if it's requested, we, you know, we can sponsor the event.
The other thing, Don, is a young man named Joseph Rotola-
I was thinking of that too, yeah.
Is, is sort of coordinating events at St. Joseph's for young artists, and he schedules, you know, bands, and, and it's for young people to come in a very nice environment. If you remind me, I will give you his email.
Okay, we appreciate that.
He does it Friday nights, like, once a month, and it was for the exact same reason that there's no place for young people to listen to music or perform music outside of the bars, so.
Exactly, okay. The other item, I, I wanted to speak about one of the shining stories of success with regard to consolidation and shared services between the town and the village for 10 years, that's the Public Access Television Committee. You all can figure out what you want to do, I don't really have any strong opinions, but the fact of the matter is, the, it's a joint committee comprised of town and village residents that has worked without any sort of conflict or problem over the years. Apparently the town disbanded their participation in that committee. Yeah, they dissolved, they didn't, they're, they're done with it, and they're gonna form their own committee of some sort. And we weren't, as members of the committee, we weren't told till after the fact. I said something about being chair, and they said, you're not chair, because that committee is not active anymore. So whatever, you all, I just want to let you all know that there's a joint committee, and the public access coordinator doesn't know whose boss is, and, and I don't know if I'm the chair or not, I think I'm the chair of half of it, the, the half of the-
I thought we had left it that you were going to still exist by being a mayor.
But meet, as needed, as needed.
Yeah, no, I had that same conversation with this board and with the town board. Apparently the town board decided I had resigned, and they are no longer participating in the, in the committee, and they, I guess they're gonna try and draw up their own policies. It's a, you know, whatever, you know, I'm, I'm a volunteer, so I don't want to, you know, if you all don't want me to volunteer, I'm happy to stay though.
Oh, no.
So I just want to make you, make you aware of it.
Dan, do you know anything about this, on the, of the other town council?
I can't, I'm happy I can. My understanding, I think I do recall having a conversation, I don't remember if it was an email or it was a conversation, was that the, the committee, or at least what I was told, was that the committee had a project or work they were doing, and they felt that they were done with that work. I think that's where I heard, and that's where they had said that they had to re-group the committee as a result of the members feeling that they were done. Not that someone, and I don't know, I'm just telling you what I know, Don, not that you had resigned or anything like that, but that the feeling was, the work you had set out to do was complete.
Well, I think we're, well, I can talk-
I think it warrants a discussion, since it seems that we have-
Maybe we can bring it up at the joint meeting tomorrow.
I was gonna say, why don't we clarify this tomorrow night, rather than-
Yes. And lastly, we had the first meeting of the Environmental Policy Commission last evening, I have about three minutes, let me do that now, or later on, how do you want to?
Just, okay.
No, I think we should vote on whether we want to keep him for later on in torturing.
That's true. Lisa, you're watching, I tried, I tried.
We've got some boring stuff we could do first, if you want to.
Real quickly, firstly, we would like to request that there be a budget to film our meetings. We would like to be first-class citizens as far as public meetings, and have our meetings documented as all others are.
With the money that we put in to cover the-
For this year.
Yeah, we put money in when we created the committee.
Yeah, which we haven't spent.
But I don't know whether, but that's enough, how much-
Katie, could you make a note to, to ask Nancy about what that would entail?
I just did, and, Don, if you can give me a call, I'm worried to talk about the schedule for me, so we can get it ready.
We may have to amend, amend it.
Monthly, yeah.
Monthly, okay.
And we're looking for some guidance, at our next meeting, we'd like to appoint the person who's gonna be the liaison to the planning board. And the question is, does that need to be, as per the law, a, a voting commissioner? Because we have Rachel Legatka, who may be a researcher, who is willing to attend the planning board meetings. And we're hoping that, that you all can let that slide.
Or just, we'll just make her a commissioner, I mean, we have this-
Well, okay, well, there's supposedly five commissioners, at this, at this point we have six potential commissioners, and, you know, Rachel's willing to not be a commissioner, but still-
Let's, let's talk about it, 'cause, 'cause it's, I mean, obviously the other thing too is, we can always change this law, it was written as an abstract argument, so as, as, as reality kind of changes what we need, we can alter it.
But it'll take three months to amend it.
It will take three months to amend it.
And I think-
Well, let's talk, we'll, we'll figure out a way for this to work.
Okay. Let's see, we are requesting from the village board or the clerk all information on solar street lighting, and all information on municipal trash pickup, so that we can go through the numbers, go through the information, and make a recommendation.
I have all that information, I'll do it to you.
We would like by next regatta, not the one coming up in a couple of weeks, we would like some signage at both boat launches regarding the quality of the water. I think it's the responsibility of the village board to do that. We were talking about doing it for this regatta, but that seems kind of, you know, and-
It's all making game.
Yeah, the idea was something not too, not too horrible, something like, we love our Walkill River, but it's hurting, please go to riverkeeper.org for, for details, and please wash your skin thoroughly after contact with the water.
Yeah.
You know, that is also something-
As a community, we need to do that.
That is also something we can put into this commission's budget at the next fiscal week, you know, in the next budget cycle.
Well, we'll-
To be, to be installed next June, you know, next June.
There are some action items that we can bring to this board, and recommendations by June 1st, the signage and the trash pickup and the solar lighting, if we can, we have a goal to try and hedge through that, and come to you with some recommendations by June 1st.
And I think in terms of funding for that sign, for that signage, if it's, you know, assigned at each boat launch, that's not that expensive, I don't think it'll be until next budget cycle.
Okay, but it did seem-
Has that been added to the waiver for the regatta, as we were told it was going to be?
Wait, wait, I don't know which added?
The sign that he's going to put up is set, show them the sign, go.
Well, that wouldn't be for, I guess, we weren't planning on doing that for this year, that's something that's a-
Yeah, that's good for the future, but the last time we discussed the regatta, we talked about-
Yeah. As far as I know, it had nothing, but Will gave us the language, so I haven't seen a final copy of it, but-
Will was going to give the language for the waiver?
Will, Will gave us the language for the waiver, so I would, I would think that it, you know, that's a waiver we will use, but I don't know, I don't know who's in charge of getting people to sign it.
Katie would get that to the event organization. So when you sign, do, when you assign it?
Right, no, it would be, yeah, no, no, it would be, I don't know who's the person
that's getting it signed, and there is more-
The only people who see this would be the people who are about to get in the water.
I'm probably just getting it to more and more people.
Okay, okay. Well, we, we figured if we put something like this at the boat launch for this regatta, the only people would see it would be the people who are about to get in the water, and that seems a little, you know, hysterically in your face.
Let's move for the public, that Riverkeeper will be with us tomorrow night for a presentation to the joint boards. That's Town Hall at 7:30.
And lastly, we're, we're sure that the, that the village and town has covered themselves legally as far as waivers for the regatta. The question was, has there been, have you also covered yourselves morally, and have there been discussions with participants about the possible, about them thinking about whether they want to get in that water or not? We just talked about it and wondered whether there had been a discussion with participants, because as Jason has said in the past, that river is really polluted 364 days a year, and then there's a regatta, and everyone, you know, everyone's in the river. So it's a, it's a question of how in your face you want to get, and it's a judgmental law.
No, I, I appreciate that.
It's a beautiful event, it's a happy event, but, you know-
I received an email about that very thing, somebody suggested that, you know, it would be, it, it would be wrong of us not to post what pollutants are in the water at the event, or at, you know, basically, so people can decide whether or not they want to go in the water, and, and the intent, of course, is to stay on the boat, but the only time I was in the regatta, I could not stay on the boat, so, so I know that, that could be an issue, yeah.
I will mention that at the last board meeting, I was very concerned about it being a village-sponsored event, for the reasons that you are raising.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's, it's, it's rough, because it's a, it's a happy, it's a beautiful community event.
It's a great event.
It's a great thing, love the ducks, you know, it's, but, all right, see you all, you have the issues, thanks.
Yeah, thanks so much.
I think, I don't think there's any doubt that, I don't think anyone's fooled that that river is clean. And it's sad, it's cynical, but, you know, with the articles about from Riverkeeper and the BEC that were coming out, and just, I mean, if you live in New Paltz for more than a week, you know that not to go near the Walkill. So it's kind of a, go in there at your own risk kind of thing, especially at something like the regatta. You're right, we can always do more, and you're not, and I like the idea of the signs, and you're absolutely right that we should have a list of all the toxins and the, the health effects, but, you know, the regatta's gonna happen, and I don't think anyone's really objecting to that.
No, I, I think just, you know, the idea that it's up to somebody to go in the water on any other day of the year versus a village-sponsored event where we're sanctioning that it's okay to go in the water, is what the difference is. It's totally up to an individual whether or not they want to go in that water, but it's different.
But they should do some full knowledge, and-
Okay, and, and this is all a debate we've already resolved at the last meeting.
We have done this already.
Yes, we have done this already.
Already.
That's why we're moving on. Any other public comment? No other public comment? All right.
Is there, is there time for me to make a announcement?
Yeah, now it's announcements by the board.
I want to make a few announcements regarding the ongoing exploration for fresh water, including that if you had gone into Walkill in February, you would have been just fine, except that it was frozen. So you would have been cold, but the pollution level was extremely low in February, and there is ongoing testing of the Walkill as part of the freshwater exploration to determine how and at what cost it could be made potable, because we must do that. It's part of our responsibility to DEP to determine whether any of the available sources of water could be used during the projected two 10-week shutdowns. But in addition, you may notice that there are still drills in the vicinity, both sonic drills and bedrock drills are about, actually not drills, one bedrock drill, since it costs a lot of money, and we can only afford to have one of them. But those explorations are ongoing. There are approximately seven sites, I thought there were six, but I'm wrong, I think there are seven sites that are still being tested. We have, in the last two weeks, had a couple of very interesting gravel, what, discoveries, so 15, 20-foot deep, and we don't know how extensive gravel beds that are going to be the source of some amount of water. The reason we have to continue drilling is to determine what the flow rate is, and how many gallons per minute we can get. We are also exploring the old sites on the Plusa property, or near the Plusa property, east of the thruway, which have, in the past, produced a significant amount of water. We are continuing to do reservoir modeling, that is to determine how much we can get out of the existing four reservoirs. Again, right now, we would be getting maximum flow, we're getting about as much flow from the reservoirs as you can get, because this has been such a spectacular winter, but that's, one can't count on that for two and a half years or three years from now. So we, we need to have a better model to give us reservoir flow. I and Dave Plouser attended, this is, these are, item, 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 Dave Plouser attended a second meeting with the Lloyd administration to explore with them the availability of Lloyd water, and how much it might cost to provide a link between Highland and New Paltz, to assure that we would have adequate fresh water during the shutdowns, and also potentially whether it would be of value to us to have a connection that would go into the indefinite future. Lloyd happens to have about 3 million gallons a day flow, which is about three times more than they need every day. And much to our surprise, they were not using Hudson River water during the last four months. It was my impression that they were always using Hudson River water, although they were mixing it with reservoir water much of the time. As it turned out, this has been such a fantastic winter, they've been able to use all reservoir water during the last four months, so from November until now, they've used no Hudson River water. It's a huge surprise to me. We also learned that there is a concept, but only a concept, of a Southern Ulster Water Alliance that could hook Gardner, New Paltz, and Highland all together, and form what in effect would be a water authority, or a Southern County Water Alliance, but it's in concept only, I do not believe that that could be realized in the next five or six years. It's a great idea, perhaps, what its practical application is for us in the very near term, I don't know. And I- And I, Dan, Mashad, Dave Clauser, and I attended an all-day conference a week ago on water conservation. And we learned that some very large municipalities are saving a very significant amount of water, sometimes by merely educating people, and other times, of course, by investing significantly in infrastructure to reuse gray water in various ways to perhaps not just recycle it, but to treat it, but not to treat it up to potable standards, but to treat it so that it could be used for all other purposes except for drinking. So we'll have recommendations on the wallkill, the reservoirs, the Lloyd connection, the wells, and on conservation.
Thank you, Tom. Rebecca, you have something to be honest?
I basically just wanted to recognize our police department on their recent work with the tragic investigation of what happened recently in our community.
Thank you. Ari?
To totally change gears, to make these things. No, no, it's, I appreciate your recognition. They did a great job, and the rest is made for anyone who doesn't know. But this week, yesterday was birthday, and this week is first week. Tomorrow is Farm Fest. It's at the SUNY campus on the Old Main Quad from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Students for Sustainable Agriculture and Night Burger put it on, and if you are looking to get some farm-fresh vegetables, you can do that there. On Saturday, as Carol mentioned earlier, is the New Paltz Clean Sweep at St. Joseph's Church at 8:30 AM. And Sunday, on April 27th, is the Huguenot Street Earth Fair. It's a caring-for-creation earth fair at the Reformed Church on Huguenot Street. That's from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And if you want to come help set up, you can get there a little bit early. I'm sure they need an extra hand with the tables and tents.
All right. Any other announcements?
I just wanted to tell the board we'll go backwards. Deanne, Ariana, Brenda White were all at the press conference yesterday with Senator Schumer and County Executive Mike Kine and Supervisor Zimmatt to announce his pledge to raise $950,000 federal grant for a trail connection between the Lloyd Rail Trail and our rail trail in the hopes of connecting all rail trails in Ulster County, which will be the largest rail trail bike ped network in all of New York State. And he was very, very optimistic about the supervisor and the town board's effort, and minimally the village board, because we agreed to do it, but we're not doing the work in achieving this goal. So we're very, very excited and thank the town board for leading the charge on that and getting it going. And I think, having met him, I now understand how he is so successful in getting grants. This is a tenacious senator.
And if we don't get it, we won't ever vote for him again. How's that?
There we go.
Yeah.
All right, I've got, is that all of you have something?
That's it for me.
I've just got one announcement. As a result of several meetings ago, I don't remember why, in particular, some residents of Church Street had come with concerns. So I said that I'd walk the street with them and see firsthand. It ended up being a bigger event than we meant. We opened it up to the trustees. I think only Rebecca and I could make that particular day. But it was myself, Debbie Mae Rosser, Planning Director Brenda White, and Building Inspector Rich Travis, all walked with about a dozen neighbors just up and down Church Street, noticing code violations, noticing problems, having them tell us, well, the water kind of comes down here now and floods the streets, so it's always icy, no matter how much salt. All the nuts and bolts of governance, kind of things that we need to hear about. So it was so successful that Bren and I were talking, and we've already begun scheduling the rest of the streets in the village. We're going to do, I don't know if it's every Thursday, but Thursdays, we're going to have, work with the DPW to fire the streets we picked the Monday of that week. So people have a couple of days' notice. If they want to join us, we'll tell them where to meet us, what time, and a rain date if the weather's bad. And just do the same thing, walk up and down the street, point out problems. Well, you know, there's lots of noise, can we do this? The little neighborhood issues that kind of get overlooked. So I know Bren is already mapping out streets that make a good circuit you can do in about an hour, and we're going to have a list. We'll send a letter to the New Paltz Times and just let people know when we'll be there and where, and who will be there.
And can we put it on the website?
And we'll put it on the website. We'll broadcast this everywhere, get, you know, all the trustees there. It'll be noticed, so if more than a majority of those board is there, there's not a legal problem. We're going to always have a building inspector, the planning director, possibly bring out the head of public works or one of his foremen, whoever we need on the village staff levels, I'm sorry, in terms of village staff, to be able to answer questions. So we're going to experiment as we go, but it was really successful. We actually had some really interesting questions that you don't really, you don't notice how instinctively, not contradictory, confrontational the sitting behind the table is with people in the audience. You know, walking down the street and talking about their neighborhoods, the conversation was much more reasonable. It's more manageable, what can you do? This is property and responsibility. This is the village's responsibility, without a lot of the tension that can happen at a public meeting. So very well worth it, and we're going to try to do the entire village this spring. So any other announcements by the board?
No, that's fantastic.
Yeah. And just to back that up, when we say an hour walk, it's actually going to be more like three with the air pressure, because it was dark.
Yeah, it was. Well, it's 6:30 this, whatever it was, 8:30.
But yeah, it was also interesting because we were able to bring our building inspector and our new planner and not only take photographs of different violations, which we'll hear about from time to time, but without actually going out there and actually taking the photographs. We're also taking photographs of the house number or mailbox number corresponding with whatever the issue was. So it's a really good way of tracking things that need to be done and also just come back to the DPW or whoever we need to and work on addressing the issues.
Yeah, no, the building inspector has a long list by the time that walk is done. All right, I move we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, no, was there any other public comment? All right, good, I checked, double-checked. Mr. Cobby?
Yes.
And then Mr. Castle, the presentation just after, so please.
Okay, so I can lift them up or...
Yeah, come on up, whatever is more, easier, more comfortable.
This is the host seat.
Okay. I'll take it.
Okay.
So I'm glad I could be here tonight. My name is Bill Copping. I'm the customer service person responsible for municipals, large customers on the whole west side of the river. My office is in Kingston. And I guess Kate reached out to me a couple of weeks ago about the possibility of LED lighting for the village. Right now, your lights in the village are all, there's two metal halides, but for the most part, I think about three years ago, we changed out all the old mercury vapors to high-pressure sodium. So at least you have all high-pressure sodiums. The lights, except for the lights along the walk going towards Town Hall, those are owned by the village, maintained by the village. All the other lights are owned and maintained by Central Hudson. You pay a certain annual rate for them.
$65,000 a year.
Probably.
No, I know.
Yeah, yes, I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is. And, you know, but we own them, we maintain them. If it breaks, if it goes out, we take care of that. LED lighting, right now, we have in our tariff availability for customer-owned LED lighting. We're looking by the end of the year to have a Rate A LED light, and we're looking at that to be very similar on the annual charge to the 70-watt high-pressure sodium. It'll probably, that'll probably be the match we'll have. So a high-pressure sodium is about $150 a year, Rate A. So we're looking for the fixture, maintenance, install, everything about that. Not sure what the wattage is going to be, the 70-watt high pressure is what's there. 20 to 30 is generally the wattage that would replace that. So you're saving like 40 to 50 watts a light. Converts in your energy charge about $20 a fixture a year in energy savings. Okay, and that's, that would be Rate A or Rate C, the energy charge.
So $6,000 a year. We've got just, we've got 276 streetlights, I think.
No, a little more.
Two, I forget, I've got it.
Somewhere around 200.
275 Rate As and 10 of your own.
Right, yeah, so no...
10 plus the 270.
10 plus the 270.
I was off by 10.
Yeah.
So about $6,000 in savings a year to swap those out.
I'm just on to swap those out. Now, in the tariff, the way it's worded now, we're kind of looking to change this a little bit, and we've had discussion with other municipalities. There's a provision in the tariff for you to, for us to do, put your lights on the pole, like, just like a cable vision would attach. The problem is with that, it would be in a space not in our electric space. We would have to go and do a walkout if the poles weren't decode to get proper clearance to put those lights on there. There would be make-ready charges, just like any attachment would be to our pole. So what we're looking at now is the possibility of the town actually purchasing the existing lights, brackets, wire, back to everything that's tapped on. And if that were to go through, we would convert all those lights to Rate C lights, as they are, high-pressure sodium. Okay? At that point, you would be responsible to, you would own them, maintain them. You'd have to have a high-voltage contractor because it's in our space, but there would be no make-ready charges because the lights are already there, and they're in a space where they can be. For you to purchase the lights, it would be about $58,000 to purchase them, but with that, you get the brackets, and you could put your new fixtures on the brackets. There's some other things. There would be an annual attachment fee. It's like $9, rough figures.
Or light.
Per pole, yeah, light on a pole. And, you know, we would have a bond similar to the bond that we have with the village for street openings. There'd be a bond in case there was something that was wrong and we had to actually fix it. It just, it covers us just like it covers the village without any work we do in the village. Let me see, look down here quickly.
No, I mean, I have a question.
Go ahead, sure.
In the note that you sent to us, it said that Central Hudson is working on Rate A LED lights, and that should be in place by the end of 2014. So that would mean that has, like, as the mercury vapor, vapor were updated to sodium vapor, it would be the same kind of thing where eventually all the sodium vapor would be updated to LED?
Right.
What would be, what would that look like in terms of timeframe?
That we don't know.
But you said by 2014.
Well, by the end of the year, we should have the rate available. The problem, the problem we're going to have to do is look at the logistics, because, you know, if that does go in place, there's going to be a lot of municipalities that are going to want to do it. So we're going to have to have some kind of phase in. Right now, in the tariff, when we did change out the mercury vapors, it was a 5% per year.
Right.
You know, it probably, it probably can't be that low, but it's probably not going to be okay all in one year. We had, the whole, all the logistics haven't been worked out, other than the fact that, you know, we're getting the pricing and pulling all that together, because there is a market for that, you know. The problem is with owning your own lights, it's, you can save money on the fixture itself. You're going to save on a high-pressure sodium, you know, Rate A versus Rate C is about $120 a year per fixture. But the other problem is, is you've got to do all the maintenance.
Yeah.
You know, the light goes down, like, it's broken, and it's got to be a high-voltage qualified contractor, because it is in the electric space.
But if, just say, we decided in a month from now to buy the poles.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
With the lights, not the poles.
There's a saving. But then we want to convert them to LED, you've eaten up your savings tremendously. There is no savings.
Well, yeah, you would have, you'd have to buy the fixtures.
Right, because it would be the paybacks and just to purchase...
Just to purchase the existing lights and the arms and the wire. Now, the thing that's the savings for it, and I could also tell you what the arms would be worth, but we'd do it as a package.
Right.
Two things, you can just continue your lighting. We would automatically, if an agreement was signed that day, we'd do a streetlight authority order to convert to multiple C, so you're saving there. And then, as you change them out, we'd do additional streetlight authority orders to add the LEDs on. But there is that cost to purchase the LEDs and to have them installed. And that's, you know, it depends on what you can purchase them for, what your contractor's going to charge to do the work.
If we signed up, I mean, you said that it's going to be, a lot of people are interested in the LED conversion. And so how do we get to the top of the list?
Well, at this point, I can't even say, you know, what, how that's going to work, because I don't know, because I don't think there's, we don't offer it. There's been a lot of people showing interest. We're going to have to do something to be equitable to all our streetlight districts. You know, I don't know if we'd be able to do it with our forces at this point, or if it would be a private, we would use somebody to put them in. You know, and, but we couldn't say, okay, New Paltz, we're going to do your entire village, but yet, you know, the town or the, you know, town of Lloyd, we can't do it because we've got commitments. We're going to have to spread it out, so that, we don't have that yet.
And you don't have a tape, a timetable.
We don't have a time, I mean, the only thing we're saying is we're committed to have this Rate A by the end of the year, then, you know, but there'll be, there'll be...
If...
I'm wondering if, oh, sorry. I'm wondering if there's a way, like, you know, we're clearly willing to, you know, put some money towards this. I'm wondering if there's a way for us to, you know, if, say, say the percentage is 5%, you know, every year, like it was with the mercury sodium. Is there a way to get all of them turned over sooner if we were to pay for a portion of it and, you know, we would still not own the lights, but we would, we would be able to recognize that savings sooner because they would all be LED?
With us being the Rate A, I don't know that we could do that because of the tariff.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to be anything like 5%. I think it's going to have to be a higher percentage. My own personal feeling, I'm not involved in the Rate end and that policy end. I have a feeling it's going to be higher. So what probably you'd want to do is pick strategic areas, you know, and we'd do so many blocks or something, you know, working with the village, you know, not just do here and there and everywhere.
But to segue into what Ariana was saying, but I'm a different kind of horse trader. If the 10 lights that we own, village owns, if we were committed to paying you to convert those to LED, which would be our expense, would there be a reciprocity on Central Hudson's part to do the conversion of the rest of our lights that you own?
I'm not sure quite, I mean, those lights you could convert now. You could hire an electrician to go and change them out. As far as the other, it's a filed tariff, a rate, I mean...
So the two don't go together?
They don't necessarily go together. That's, those are your lights right now, so you can do what, you know.
Well, I understand that.
I think there may be some, there are to pass, there have been some wire issues with those lights also, I believe.
And it sounds like you're not prepared to go ahead and begin the conversions.
Well, we don't even have a light that's in our rates now, so...
It says here the end of 2014.
So we're a little premature.
Well, I don't think so. I mean, I think you've got to look at, you know, you have the fact that, see what the difference in cost is going to be on an annual basis, even if you just own the high-pressure sodium. You're going to have to see what the fixtures are going to cost you. You know, they're all over the place. There's all grades, there's all different manufacturers. The only thing I'd say is, you know, because they're so new, you know, the claims are that they last for 20, 25 years. We've done some RMD with some that haven't worked out at all in a couple of years, so just make sure it's a reputable manufacturer. But you got to see the price of those, you know, see what it's going to cost to have a contractor... But you gotta see the price of those, you know, see what it's gonna cost to have a contractor onboard to, A, do the retrofits, and B, to do the maintenance for you. You know, you're gonna have to have somebody that's readily available, you have lights out. I mean, I know sometimes we're not the quickest to get the lights on. We try, but you know, sometimes it isn't the, as quick as people would like. But, you know, you're gonna be faced with the same, the same problem. You'll be getting the calls like we do if they're not fixed in a timely.
Erin, you have a question?
Yes, Gary, um, in driving back from, I think it was, wherever I was driving. All throughout New Jersey and places like Newark, I was driving by and there was a solar panel light. I mean, there is Central Hudson with that, why can't we, is the village at all open to looking at, you know, solar lighting?
You wouldn't want that.
I have some, I have some work done on it, and that's what Dawn was asking for.
That's what Dawn was asking about earlier.
Yeah, I have some initial work done with information from Central Hudson.
We can give you Newark. Yeah, we've never had, we've never had like a board just done in Newark, but we're all, I think.
More concept approval.
Well, the thing that we all have to understand at the moment is we, the village of New Paltz does not own the poles. They are owned by Central Hudson.
I'm asking, does Central Hudson have that capacity or ability to convert the poles to be lighted via solar panels?
I don't know how that, I'd have to pose that question. I'm guessing that because there is no, it's our pole, we own the pole, there's no delivery charge, there's nothing, nothing would be ours.
It'd be free electricity.
Yeah, we would, we would get nothing from you.
But you wouldn't make any money off of them, yeah.
We wouldn't be making any, anything, money off them, I don't know how that would work. I can't, I can't answer that, really, I mean, I take it back and ask, but.
But, would you find out for us?
On the solar? I'll ask, I'll ask, definitely.
I guess it's a live thing.
Whether there is an intended rental fee associated with it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, here's the, I'm just thinking to myself, there, if the lights are in that space, they're not actually electric fixtures, they're in the electric space. That may be an issue with National Electric Safety Code, I don't know, someone will have to look at. You know, we can always, as I said, we can lease space on the pole, lower down on the pole. Unfortunately, because there's a lot of poles and there's a lot of telephone, everybody has to have certain clearances. And if it's, if not, whoever the attacher is has to pay, just like cable vision. If we go into an area and put cable vision in, if it hasn't got proper clearances to National Electric Safety Code, cable vision actually pays to make the proper clearances so they can attach. So that's, I mean, that's out there, that's what's in the rates now for rate C, but it could be very costly. If you had to replace a pole, it could be eight, ten thousand dollars depending on the pole, just to do it in make-ready, yeah.
Well, thanks, is any questions from the board?
Yeah, I mean, you've got my email.
I'll just summarize something.
Sure.
From what I understand, you are telling us, what we can do now is research.
No, you could, we could start to really hammer out an agreement if you were really interested in, you're gonna have to do some research. But we could start the process of getting an agreement on paper for you to purchase the existing rate A lights and turn them into rate C lights.
But we would know what the rates are only by the end of this year?
No, that's, that's, the lights that are out there, that's basically just purchasing the lights that are there to set yourself up for changing to LED.
On your own.
On your own.
But let's be very clear, because I'm getting, Tom asked if we wanna buy our own. But you initially began by saying at the year end two thousand and fourteen, Central Hudson is going to begin conversion.
We will, we have a rate A.
So we don't need to buy the poles.
I would not be interested myself in buying.
Yeah, I would say that.
Old stuff now that would have to be, anyhow, that's just my opinion, forget it.
No, again, that's, that's a, you know, that's a way of doing it. I would say it wouldn't hurt for the village to send a letter stating that, you know, if this rate A went, however you wanna word it, if it goes in, we would be interested and we'd like to.
Be your guiding pigs?
Well, yeah, whatever, get it, you know, send, send me something, just to get something on record and.
You get our place up.
Okay, Erin, you wanna finish this off?
Yeah, just one more question, so, just hypothetically, because you said you all kind of endorse the concept of solar, solar-generated lighting. If you purchase the poles, could they then just put in solar panels and their own lighting? Well, we wouldn't be purchasing poles, we'd be purchasing the lights and their fixtures.
The arm that holds the light, the wire, the fixture itself.
Could we purchase the poles?
Yes.
No.
You can't purchase.
No, well, they're jointly owned by Central Hudson and Verizon Horizon.
Part of the, yes.
They'd be purchasing fixtures and putting the panel.
Right, the other thing though, Erin, is we'd be buying something that's old and often breaks. As opposed to, for example, if we wanted to do our own street lighting, avoid the Central Hudson poles altogether and have the freestanding ones that have nothing to do with Central Hudson. And then have these guys come in at their expense and take their rented streetlights out of our village.
No, that's, that's, that's a not, that's a weird assumption, sure.
And then we get, then we would get to have like the Sesame Street kind, you know, the quaint little village streetlights.
And then you have more overhead wires, and what fun is that?
No, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be overhead wires with, if it was solar panels.
You'd have more poles.
Anyway, all right, let's, we've got a long agenda, so Bill, thank you so much for coming.
Okay, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Okay, and you've got my email, email me with any questions.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna send that letter that you recommended, so we really appreciate that.
And you didn't get to say anything.
Absolutely. All right, we've got a presentation on Michael Kast. Is there anyone here with, after that, is there anyone here for something specific on the agenda?
Methodist Church.
Methodist Church.
Methodist Church, okay.
David's here for historic preservation.
Don, you're gonna be here anyway, but I'm very interested in that, so, for Joe's sake, I'm gonna do it soon.
Hello.
So, everybody doing?
Go ahead, Mike.
Excellent.
Okay, so.
How much are you selling LED lighting for?
Oh, you don't even wanna go there now. I decided I'm gonna just kinda keep it very brief tonight and just reiterate some of the points of why I think Veridian would be a great choice for the village of New Paltz. First and foremost, the thing that attracted me to the company of Veridian in the first place is that it's green and they're having incredible positive environmental impact. In less than five years, it's been, excuse me, a little sick, over two billion pounds of carbon emissions avoided. And I think that's just, it's incredible. And this company is really, they're at the crossroads of sustainability and affordability. Because what they've done is created a hybrid product where they're using renewable energy, they're sourcing it local, but it's not, and you can get a hundred percent wind, which traditionally comes at a premium. Or you can use this everyday green product that they've got, it's fifty-four percent renewable energies. It's wind, hydroelectric and solar predominantly. And it's coming in consistently, less expensive than the utilities all across the state. And we're actually, we have live markets in ten states in the northeast and company is growing rapidly, so. It's just, I think it's great that, you know, we've set something up where our customers are able to be a part of that. And they're saying, and I don't know exactly how, what the specifics of the average household are, but they thought that the average household that switches a meter over to Veridian has the same positive impact in one year of having switched their meter over as that same household recycling for the rest of their lives. Now, I know that seems a little generic, but, and I would never tell anybody not to recycle either, but it's a testament to, you know, what's really, what we're collectively doing here. And at the same time, we're saving people a lot of money. I've been a customer for about two and a half years now, I've saved over three hundred dollars.
You were going to project out for us our current use and bill?
Yes.
And what it would be if we had Veridian?
I would be very happy to do that, I would need to see historical bills in order to do that. But I can give you certainly a comparison of what you have been paying versus what Central Hudson's rates have been, or I should say what Veridian's historical rates have been versus Central Hudson, absolutely.
I'll move that we authorize the village to share the information that is required to get a cost estimate?
I think just, yeah, just set up an appointment with Nancy.
Okay.
Well, let's prove it.
I.
I.
Wait, you didn't have a second?
The second thing I wanted to ask, it was power outage.
We have nothing to do with that, in a very good way, which is to say, Central Hudson is the curator of the grid of the power lines that come into our homes. And the power goes out, or you smell gas somewhere, or anything that you would have otherwise been calling Central Hudson, you still will. It's a seamless transition and it's just the supply portion that we're dealing with.
So it would be a cost estimate for all of our buildings?
Okay.
Okay? The water plant, sewer plant, DPW garage, this building, fire.
Great.
Cost it out?
Okay.
And present a comparison.
Be an honor and a privilege to do just that. Any objections to Sally's proposal then?
No.
Okay. Anything else you got for us? Just wanted to reiterate that I do have the cooperation of the New Paltz Community Foundation, who's working with me as essentially, as an associate of Veridian. And if the village does decide to switch, it would be, I'm essentially functioning on their behalf. So we would sign up the municipal meters through the community foundation. And not only would the village save money, but it would be the community foundation that makes money as a result of it. And that's pretty great, because they're obviously, you know, here to funnel money back into the municipality. They do a lot of work, obviously, the last year with family, which is very near and dear to my heart. So I'd, I'd love to see that just be a byproduct of everything else that's great.
That's fine, I wonder if not trying to function as a not-for-profit.
No, 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 me personally, no, no.
No, no, it's a program, Stuart spoke with me about it, he said that Karen presented with them. And he spoke with me about it where, you know, basically there is like a donor figure of X amount that, you know, goes to Veridian, X amount goes to New Paltz Community Foundation. So it would be raising money for them.
Exactly, it has to do with, with usage. So again, without having seen your bills, I couldn't give you an estimate. But for example, like P and G's, who has, by the way, saved thirty-seven hundred dollars in the last ten months since they switched. As a, as a customer with that level of usage, the community foundation might make twenty-five, thirty dollars every time P and G's pays a bill. For someone like myself or you, if we sign up our residents, the community foundation would make two dollars every time. But it's still, it's residual income that is just another byproduct of us saving money with a product that's better.
Well, when you do the cost estimates and you get the whole projection, will you also show what percentage will go?
Absolutely, yeah, certainly.
Okay.
And Michael, in addition to that, I did communicate back and forth with both Nancy Branca, who's our treasurer, who we need to speak with next, and Will Frank, who's our attorney.
Okay.
And basically requesting from them what we would need to do to make the switch in terms of legalities. So Nancy may have that information by the time you speak.
No, there, until we have the analysis, can make the decision, you know.
Oh, I know, I know that, but still, we need that information too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And if you, I mean, I read this stuff and I was just looking at like variable rates versus fixed rates and, you know, and you just spoke to fifty-four percent being, you know, for renewables versus being able to purchase a hundred percent. If you could just give us a breakdown of what the rates would be for, or could you, you can't, could you?
I can tell you what they are right now, we do change our rate offers on the first of every month. And in addition, again, I don't know what level of usage you have, but anything that's consistently over twenty-five thousand kilowatt-hours per month is something that we would kick up to our corporate office to negotiate, so I wouldn't be able to speak to that. But I can tell you that right now, the residential rates that we're offering, fixed rates are nine point four nine cents for twenty-four months and nine point nine nine cents for twelve months. And by comparison, Central Hudson is about eleven point four, eleven four two, I think it was.
Okay, but they don't have a variable rate choice?
We do have a variable rate choice as well, yes.
We would need to know that.
Certainly. The current variable rate for Veridian is ten point seven nine.
So it's not that.
Right. My recommendation to all of my customers, and again, you would, I would tell you everything you need to know before you make a choice.
I'll ask if you don't.
The fixed rates are how my customers, so far I've been doing this for a little over a year, and that's how they've been recognizing the savings that they've got.
And when do you think you could give us a projection?
If, as soon as I get this information, you know, it might take me a couple of days to, to put it together, but that's.
So the next board meeting, in our first meeting in May, you could?
This is May seventh?
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth, okay.
You could do that without too much pressure?
I think I have all of our energy usage, so I could probably just email it to you.
Okay.
What, Ariana?
I'm pretty sure I have all of our energy usage, because I asked for it with my renewable energy research. So I have all of our consumption for the last, I think it was two years.
Oh, fantastic.
Let him double-check.
But, yeah.
Okay, I just need.
Because you didn't do all the buildings, you didn't do, you did water plant?
Yep, I have all of the consumption rates.
Any other questions or anything I could address for you? Nancy's information, contact information.
Quick, give me a call.
Fantastic, we'll do just that. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, let's move up, discussion of local law.
I'll move the adoption.
Thank you, I'll second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That's that, we're tabling number ten because we have no law to discuss.
We'll put up your signs, Carol.
Yeah, but we just got it tonight, so it's not, we don't try to read it ahead of time, there's no point in discussing.
We're done, you've got it.
So table that till our next meeting. And that brings us to the waste sale MRP, Ariana, you wanna?
You wanna do the fees?
No, because we just got it at the table tonight, and I don't wanna discuss anything at the table. Not a local law, anyway.
You're right.
Ariana, do you wanna?
Erin has a question, hers is a quick question.
Yeah.
Because it gave me feet, but it's from Rose Street to where, is it from Rose to?
It's a hundred and ten, I didn't bring my.
It's basically to the first house.
Yeah, it's a hundred, it's differential on the two sides because of the number of driveways. So it's thirty feet in, starting, and then a hundred and, if you call me, I'll tell you the value of it.
Erin, I can just, you know, you're a colleague.
Are we doing pre-sol?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's go right down the list.
So I asked Will to send us a sample, was there anyone else?
Was there anyone else who want, was there something specific to the agenda? Dan, oh, Dan had something, yeah, 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 that's, I'm sorry, I had followed.
Yeah, which is actually mine as well, so I can just keep talking.
Yeah, okay.
So the Historic Preservation Commission, their meeting on Monday, received an application about a designation of a local landmark, or a proposed landmark designation for Peace Park. And they said that it would meet with two of their criteria to designate a landmark. One is that the property possesses special character, an historic or aesthetic interest or value of part of the cultural, political, economic or social history of the locality we just favor nation. And two is that the property is identified with historic personages. And I think all of you have the kind of due diligence later at the table. But really, what their question is for us, and we proposed the question to Will, the attorney, is they have to officially notice the village, well, they have to officially notice the property owner, which in this case is the village. So they wanna know if this is official notification to us before they can, they can have their public hearing.
Is this what they do with other people, send them a letter?
They would send, yeah, but they said if they, you know, if, if we would accept this as official notification, they will not have to send us a formal letter.
Oh, I see.
I will move that we accept the recommendation of the Historic Commission to designate.
Well, they haven't recommended it yet, they have to hold their public hearing first?
I thought we had to be notified and accept, and then they have the hearing.
We accept notification, we don't accept their recommendations, because they're not, they're not recommending anything at this point.
All right, I'll move this.
I don't think we have to move anything.
You have to put it in writing to them by letter that you've been notified.
Okay, so I think what we should do, because we asked Will the question and he has not responded yet whether or not this counts as official notification, is that we, we accept the notification pending attorney's acceptance or approval of the acceptance.
Second.
Any discussion?
You're saying that we.
That we will accept this as official notification pending Will's review of that.
And that we allow them to proceed with the hearing and all that they will need to do, so they don't have to come back?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
I don't think we have, I don't think we have to, I don't think we have to say, allow them to proceed with the hearing. We have to just say that we accept the notification.
Well, I'll move that we accept the notification.
Sorry, they've been moved and seconded.
All in favor?
I.
Staying? I don't know.
But, Ariana.
I mean, you know, I mean, you're gonna say, but I don't think you have to.
Okay, then I.
Ariana, when you meet with the Historic Commission and depending upon the procedure and all that, I think there has to be some clarification as to how the public will know that this is a designated spot.
Oh, look at the parties, that's how they're gonna. Oh, look at the parties. That's how they're gonna know.
I think, uh, Dan might be able to answer that question.
Yeah, I, I think the, you're saying how are they gonna notice the public hearing?
No, no, yeah. In other words, there should be an historic marker put up.
Yes, well, that's, that's exactly what we're planning on doing, and I believe the village currently has a marker as well, that we would be able to put on.
I don't think we have a marker.
Um, I, I just hope we do.
We have a peace pole.
No, but I also believe we have a historical.
Oh, oh, yeah, they said we have a, there's a plaque that would go.
Alright.
Definitely, yeah, yeah.
Do we have that?
The, the historic preservation commission said that they, they do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And off topic, sorry about it again, there was also some discussion too about rededicating the peace pole, that I believe that.
It's being refinished.
We also need to talk about what we had talked about earlier, you wanted to do it in the spring, and that is a ribbon cutting.
Oh, yeah, but we should, that's, not, not tonight, but yeah.
Together, that would be lovely.
Let's move on, we'll, we'll have that, make a note that, uh, we have to talk about that, Katie. Alright, so Ariana, you wanna keep talking?
Um, sure, uh, so I have, I asked, I asked all of you for input, um, on an RFP for waste hauling. Um, for household and recycling pickup, um, to contract with a private hauler. Who would do it for the community wide, um, and uh. I only got input from Blue and Nick, um, Sally had given me.
And I brought you some material.
Spoken input, um, so I have, Will give us a sample contract, um, a sample request or proposal rather. So that we can discuss it, and if you have any other input, we can talk about that, um.
Does it matter that it's for bulk pickup and not for?
Well, that was one of my first things I was gonna say, is we wouldn't write bulk pickup, we would write household.
But it doesn't, it doesn't change like the materials?
It, it doesn't change, change the nature of the request for proposal, um, but I, I mean, I made, I made a whole bunch of notes online. That I can share with you, um. Just in terms of, uh, you know, we, we might, since we've never done this before, we might not wanna have numbers like. Two to three large packer style refuse trucks, or two to three employees per vehicle, two to three trucks per week per order. Um, things along those lines, just because we don't, we don't know from experience what that schedule might be. And so my suggestion would be that we would, well, well, it includes here, alternate schedules may be proposed, will be considered only indicated. But so, I believe that we should just receive the suggested schedules and in, it says one specification, C, a pre-work conference. Um, where we would, you know, solidify a schedule, but I think we, we should allow. The waste hauler to propose that kind of thing to us, and we could have specifications like. You know, the hours that we would like it to be done in, because one of my biggest complaints is before seven A.
Well, that would, that would be in the village codes, so they.
Well, exactly, but, but I think, I think, uh, you know, putting, putting village codes in the, in the contract certainly would be a good idea. Um, we could even put it in the bid, uh, in the rest of the proposal, so if anybody is bidding, they would already know what they're rolling on. Um, you know, cuz I don't, I don't think we, I mean, we can include the village code in, in the RFP and just say.
I think just a men- a reference to it.
As a appendix, you know, so that they have it right there.
Oh, I've got it. One of the, the things Ariana, I was going to suggest and ask, and I did bring. Cuz I know that you are interested in this. The community in Pennsylvania is doing this, it's a township, and that's number one question. I think it would be far more beneficial if we could have a mutual. Uh, understanding with the town, and they be a part of this process.
I completely agree, and I.
Because that would lower the rate.
Dan left, because he and I have been talking about it, um, and I figured since we already had the ball rolling on this, we could hammer out some of this stuff. And then, you know, present something at maybe, maybe our joint meeting in May, where we can talk about this once we have a sample.
One of the things I understand we have to be careful about is, yes. I have the right, remain, keep the right to remove my own. Alright, and I think we're gonna have to somehow figure out a way that requires that you prove you do that. Apparently, one of the things that has happened, and that's why I brought you all this stuff to look at, um, is that. People in a surrounding municipality had this plan, but people weren't in fact. Taking their garbage away themselves, and, or they wanted to use another option. And that's fine, as long as they can show.
That they're bringing it to the dump themselves.
Yeah.
How would you, oh, well, I, well, then, you have a permit at the town transportation.
So you could show that you have, but the responsibility becomes yours to. Now, this, this is a public, I mean, this is a public body contracting with a private hauler, exactly what you're proposing. So I think you would find this very helpful and interesting.
Oh, yeah, that sounds great.
Both, you know, in terms of, and there's more materials too, I can get you.
Katie can scan it and send it to all of us at Will.
Sure, and I'll get, I did not bring, but I will get you the actual applications and. Cuz I think. When, when you fill it out, you know, that you are participating. And you als- I think also in Will's packet, I think it's very important to show. That the list of stuff that is not.
Yeah, I thought that was a, that was interesting.
I want to leave, say, a, I think we need to work out with whoever's gonna do this. That if I want to leave out, say, a sofa. I understand what the extra charge will be to me, and that should be listed right on the forms.
I imagine that they all, a lot of companies already have a schedule for that, where they, you know, they have prices for our clients. Those are large.
That they leave stuff out, they're gonna pay to have it.
There's also the village cleanup, which we could, I mean, that's, that's essentially this bulk. The, you know, what he describes here with the bulk trash collection requirement, that's essentially what the village does for the village cleanup.
Right, but people also are known to put things out, you know, at other times, so you might wanna. Include that, that fee.
That's a, that's a really good point.
Yeah.
So what is it that has happened tonight, Ariana?
Um, well, since you gave me input, I wanted you to give me input.
You wanna what?
But not on this, but not on this, on the other.
Um, so I wanted you to give me input, which Sally is doing, um. And, and I guess I, I share, I mean, uh, it's, it came out kinda small, but I shared with you some of it you already had, um. But you know, I met with, uh, I met with Blue and Nick, and one of the things that Sally had suggested we put in the RFP. Is that the, our village, um, village trash is collected, like the, the public, public garbage bins are collected at no extra cost. And they said that that sends up a red flag for them, because we, because of prevailing wage laws and things with the municipality. We can't dictate that there's no extra cost for that. That could be something that is hammered out in a contract, but we can put out an RFP. For something like that specifically.
Right, it's, it, it's something to negotiate at the time of the contract, that they would in fact pick up municipal garbage for free. I think you're onto a good thing.
Yeah, uh, Blue and Nick really, really liked it, um. My mic.
I smell coffee.
Coffee?
I think.
I don't know. Um, so, so I guess, you know, the next step would be for Will to draft an RFP that would apply to us. Um, and based on this, you know, this was his sample, and I, I, when he said he had a sample, I thought it was going, I didn't think it would be.
For bulk pickup.
I thought it was going to be for household garbage and recycling, but, um, but this stuff still gives us a framework.
This would be, this is the outline for the RFP.
This is still the outline, yeah.
I think it needs to be a little more developed.
Right.
To the thing, the topics that you talked about earlier.
Well, well, now.
Very specific.
Now you can draft something more specific with, with our comments, um, and anything else that we, you know, like, like the things that you're suggesting. To include, um, you know, requesting from the hauler, that kind of schedule.
Could we ask tomorrow night, the town board, if they would be interested in exploring this with us through an RFP?
Absolutely.
Let's do that, because I think it would be more meaningful to a company. I mean, obviously, the bigger the territory.
Well, well, I think, I think it makes sense for us to do it with the town for so many reasons, um.
I do too.
You know, and I, I just, I just thought it would be good for us to kind of like hash out what an RFP might look like, just. It's easier doing things with the board and presenting it to them that way. Um, but since we don't have an RFP anyway, we can say, are you interested in this idea? We will have one. And uh, we'll work on the details and present it at our next meeting.
But I mean, when you send out the RFP, if you could say for both the town and village. You know, some of these companies would be much more interested in giving a very solid proposal. If they thought that they were getting a ver- there's a big difference between the population of the town and the village.
Except, think about this though, you've got seven, half of the population in two square miles. And the other half the population spread out over thirty-five square miles around it, so the distance between pickups in the town is enormous.
It's still pickup.
I mean, it's still, I mean, yes, but the economies of scale still work.
That's what, that's, I don't know, I'm not, I don't know.
Imagine picking up, if you're, if there's five houses within a mile, and you're only picking up one of them, you're still driving that street.
Um.
As a waste hauler.
I'm game for you to go ahead.
Okay, um, I, I guess, I just wanted more input, from all of you, it's generally what it is, yeah.
I've, I've been trying to find out things to tell you.
Well, well, you, you had given me some input, um, I just, you know, I don't, I don't wanna, I didn't wanna draft some, have something drafted completely without. More, uh, more direction, you know, so that we could, Will could, Will can put up together something that we're not gonna have, and totally agree with him.
But I think the thing I gave you really is very interesting what they spell out, how they spell it out.
Okay.
And if you want the forms that, you're gonna scan it and send it to everyone, if you want the actual forms that were, that were given out. Ariana, let me know and I'll get those for you.
I think that would be great, yeah.
Okay, alright.
I think the more information they have on specifics like that, the better, whether they amend it real.
Yeah, there's kids like that.
Right.
Bulk trash specifically?
Alright, so, we don't need, we don't need any more. Alright, so number twelve, uh, what do you guys wanna do about the snow removal one?
What, what are we doing?
Heidi.
I'm Heidi.
On Church Street. Wants us to, to waive the seventy-three dollar fee for having to go back, um. Having to bill her, uh, for a snow removal violation.
There.
Um, I think.
There is a lot.
Heidi's, I mean, how is my?
No, that is an area that is under much discussion at the moment. And I don't.
Church Street generally?
Yeah, and there's been a lot of stuff moving and, and construction and all of that. And I think she's raised enough questions and given us enough proof.
Or someone wanna make a motion?
So I'm gonna move that we give the relief.
Is there a second?
With discussion?
Yeah, you have to second it to discuss, yeah.
For discussion.
Okay.
One time only, but you know, we have so much to straighten out there that I think we ought to do it.
Well, her, her little stretch of, um, Church Street was an area that we noticed a lot of violations. And it's just so obvious that.
There's a problem.
A lot of the issues are due to the excessive construction that has taken place.
Okay, you and I agree.
So, yeah, put that second in.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, alright, now the relief for sewer, request for relief for sewer portion of the bill. There's something for Blue's memo here. Oh, there we go. The head of Public Works, uh, determined no water from pipes under the sewer system, therefore. Um, we may reduce the sewer portion of the bill.
I, I move we reduce the.
I'll second that, any discussion?
What are you doing?
I move that we reduce the sewer portion of the.
Yes, and I seconded that.
Can I just ask a dumb question?
Well, you can ask whatever kind of question you want.
The house is vacant. Is that my understanding?
I don't know.
The structure's va- vacant, yes.
Hmm?
Yes, the structure is.
It says it's vacant. Yeah.
Um, therefore, I think, I'm not sure I agree. I think that people have a responsibility to check on their properties.
The water they're paying for, but the sewer, because no sewage was used.
Right, it didn't go into the sewer.
It didn't go into the sewer system, so we didn't treat it.
It went on the ground.
Yeah, we didn't treat, that's, yeah.
Okay, okay.
We're, yeah, okay, so any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Alright.
Uh, number fourteen is a, a routine request from the Mountain Laurel School. I added, didn't add it to the consent agenda. Simply because, um, this is, I'd like to add a condition. Um, I had a meeting with, uh, Principal Jackal, um, more than a year ago, which she promised. To pay five thousand dollars to the village as, towards the wear and tear that the Mountain Laurel School, uh, does on Heiser Park for use as their playground. We've to date received two payments, I believe, one in twelve, uh, twelve hundred, I think totaling just over two thousand of the five thousand.
And they also have not ever agreed to setting up a meeting as you requested.
It's, we had one set up and I had to cancel that, but it's been, what, two months we've been trying to set up a meeting with the, myself, Will Frank, and the school? So I've been trying to sit down with them and have a face-to-face and, and get a contract written, and we're, we're gonna need one. We're gonna have to, I think, have them fill out the same paperwork to use the park as other few. But for now, you know, I'll move to approve the event conditional on them paying the remainder of the five thousand dollars that they owe the village.
Well, I was gonna make it a little kinder, and that is I would move to approve it pending a date be set up. A firm date for the discussion that you wish to have.
Well, this is, this is money that we were already, we're already owed.
Right.
So I'd like them to.
When was it due?
Last year. They've been dodging, they've been dodging us.
They're in arrears of three thousand dollars already. And they, my understanding is that they have not been amenable to. Setting up a meeting with the mayor and Will to do a contract.
Or, or return the treasurer's calls promptly to try to follow up with this. So, that, well, my, if, if no one seconds it, I was, anyway, I mean.
Well, I, but I think it's, I, I, I think it's worth a discussion of some sort, so I'm gonna second it because I want the discussion. Because I, I, as everybody else.
Is it fair to hitch the two? Is the obvious question.
Well, it, it's fair to hitch something. It's fair to, uh, Sally is suggesting. That it's fair to get a commitment, but if you have a commitment only to a meeting, then they could cancel a meeting, and even for legitimate reason. Who knows why people might cancel it, so I would want a commitment.
And remember, this meeting was to what we're gonna do going forward.
Yeah.
Not whether we, not, not what was agreed to in the past.
Well, I want a commitment, uh, in writing that they are, uh, going to pay the, uh, in arrears. Whatever they are in arrears by a date certain.
Have a, I'll change my motion to accept that and that date set by the treasurer.
Date set by the treasurer, okay.
A date certain set by the treasurer.
A date certain set by the treasurer.
The only problem is May second's not very far.
Yes, yeah.
And, you know, three thousand.
No, but we're just asking for something in a letter or writing.
May fourteenth.
Yeah, they can just tell us when they're gonna pay and put it in writing.
Date certain.
Yeah, but what are you going to do if the event occurs, May fourteenth? Is a date certain, and date certain isn't?
Well, then I, then I think the Mountain Laurel School's reputation is gonna, is gonna.
Alright, and then I'll go along with it.
I mean, it is, it is, it is a good school, it's not like it's a blight on the community. It's, uh, it causes problems because it doesn't pay taxes, and, and relatively few of those residents can afford to attend, but. And they, and they use public resources, and these, but these are all solvable problems.
Hasbrook Park is their playground.
Yeah, which cannot be, not without our permission, so we're gonna, so.
And so I think we really, I mean, they made a commitment to make a donation to the village. For use of.
Yes.
And I think they have to honor it.
So look, one way to get there is the way suggested.
Right, what do you two think?
I, I'm, I'm gonna recuse myself from this conversation because I have Rafi goes there.
Oh, right, right, right.
And that's appropriate.
Okay, um, two things. Did anyone, anyone say pending a meeting prior to the event? You did, okay, good, thank you. I couldn't quite.
But I'm not sure anybody agreed to that.
No one agreed to that one. Because what's the value of a meeting when you do this?
No, the meeting as well as payment.
Yes, that's what I.
I, I think that would be appropriate.
That's, I mean, that would be. That's, I mean, that would be fine by me, full pa- payment of what they owe us and we sit down and have the meeting we've been meaning to have. And those two conditions get met and you can have your use of the park.
That's fine with me.
Is that?
Okay.
Is that alright?
Yeah.
Second.
Second, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and one extension. Um, this one should be short because it's obviously if the board thinks it's worthwhile, would be a longer conversation. But it's also a brief law, uh, briefly about, stop saying briefly. Um, I'd like to ban chain stores and franchises from the village. And so this, uh, law would allow us to do that. The biggest thing would be the definition of what's called a formula business, which I think really becomes the. The only legislative meat to it. But in concept, I wanted to see what the board thought about the idea of banning chain stores, since we have a tool that would allow us to do it if we chose.
You know I don't want chains first.
I mean, I mean, can you imagine the B three being torn down and on the towns going up, because our zoning would allow that right now.
Yeah, lo- lo- local, uh, business owners.
I second.
You second.
Well, I know it's.
I wanna discuss.
I know, I know.
That's what we are doing.
Yeah, well, no, Rebecca just seconded.
Well, she seconded.
Oh, she seconded Ariana's comment.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
There's no motion.
Oh, oh, that's why.
But this is a discussion.
Right, yeah, on the merits of whether, like, cause if there's more work than he's doing, I'll go back and do that and bring it back to us.
Well, I just wanna note that I noted that Brenda, Brenda White sent a brief memorandum suggesting that this was. Conceptually fine and that it, it could be made into a local law.
You know, I should just give, there's a brief little history that might be useful. Um, I actually wrote this back in two thousand six with a prior village attorney Spencer McLaughlin. Um, it was then put before the, the village board in O six and then the spring of O seven. That village board had sent it both to the county planning board and to the village planning board, got back positive comments from both. And, uh, the next meeting that was going to be, uh, simply a motion to set a public hearing on whether to pass this exact law verbatim. Um, and that happened to be the first meeting that I wasn't mayor and it was never picked, that law was never, it was shelved and never picked up again. So what you're looking at got through the process of having positive comments from the county and village planning boards. It may be out of date or maybe there's better ways to do it now in the intervening six or seven years, but. You know, this isn't the first draft of this, is what I'm saying, this is, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't.
Right, yeah, I'm not just looking around.
Yeah.
Making eye contact with my neighbor who's looking.
I think I was there too.
Yeah, you were there too, yeah.
I guess I have three questions. One, our zoning law right now prevents by square forty-two requirements box stores.
Yeah.
So that's done. I mean, that's not.
Which is actually used as an example in other places.
I know it isn't, but it's not relevant to us because we've already taken care of that. Two.
And the B three would have taken care of any remainders.
That's what I'm saying.
Nowhere left to build like that.
So, so that makes this unnecessary if we're talking about box stores. But. What about banks? What if? Ch- uh, Key Bank leaves. Or, um, Chase Bank leaves and that is taken over by. Whatever M and T, whatever bank you want, that is a chain, that is a chain by your definition. So, you're going to say that, or we're going to say if we pass this. That no bank can come in and occupy that building and it will remain vacant.
Right, well, I, I have a similar concern, so I'm glad you used the bank. Uh, my concern was, uh.
Can I finish?
Yes, oh, I thought you had.
No, I hadn't. Second, I am very concerned about the difference between a. Chain store and a franchise store. Because then that is saying to local people, you can't open a business. And hold a franchise for a company, say. Like Napa Auto Supplies, that is locally owned, but it, by this definition, is a chain store.
No new, so it'd be grandfathered, but no new ones could come in. Is what, in the real world, is what happened.
Well, or if, if that business goes out, it can't be replaced.
I guess True Value is another good example, although.
True value?
Either of these, oh, is Napa in the village, I guess? Yeah, um, cause I was gonna say True Value.
It's in the town, but it is locally owned and it's a very good example of what I'm talking about.
You know, we already have a, an elegant solution to, which is, which, to your point, which is. Um, built into this is the understanding that one of the functions of the ZBA is to give use variances. And uh, under the terms of the ZBA, one of the things that you do is if, for example. A gas station might be another example, that there are no local gas stations, they don't, they don't exist anymore. But, but there's no mom, no such thing as a mom and pop gas station, they just don't exist anymore, they used to, but they're gone.
They do, they still are.
But the franchises, yes, but you don't see.
Right, but they are.
You don't see Sally Brothers'.
Businesses.
That's what I.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I was gonna say.
This is exactly what I'm saying. You could go before the ZBA for a use variance for your property because there's no other. Um, because there was, there was no other business like it. Does that make sense?
I think that that is a real cop out.
Cop out, it's using another, it's using.
No, I'm sorry, I don't think it is the ZBA's responsibility to have to deal with legislation. That the village knowingly adopted, knowing that there were going to be appeals to the ZBA.
But Oliver, Oliver's on exactly, all this is, all this is is a zoning law and the ZBA is there to give exceptions to it.
I, I have to agree because I, I, with you, um, I think, I think that, you know, any, any law that we put into place in terms of zoning code. Can be appealed.
And should be in, in certain cases.
In certain cases, right, and it is, and it is the ZBA's job to decide whether or not something is going to be helpful or hurtful.
On the smaller level, on the small case by case level.
Maybe if, if, you know, Chase Bank is going to turn into a different bank and, you know, the only. Only thing that that building can be is a bank, and that, then they say, alright, you know, we're gonna grant this variance and it's not going to be a long and arduous. Process to decide whether or not to grant a variance. And I think, but, but, say, I mean. I, I bank with Hudson Heritage Federal Credit Union because I'm not in favor of these large banks because I don't like the things that they put their money towards. So, maybe there's a reason why Chase Bank or whatever bank it might be, isn't something that we want in our community. And we can say no.
No, but Ariana, I'm gonna take your argument a little further and I'm gonna say. You have the intelligence to make a choice, other people are intelligent too. But you cannot deprive other people of choosing to bank at Chase.
Which is why we have the ZBA who would grant the variance.
And my point is that I believe that, that this community that we all live in. All support local businesses.
Absolutely.
We absolutely buy it local businesses because we support local businesses. And I don't think this law is necessary.
Okay, well, that's a, well, alright, whatever, I, I don't agree, but.
Kennedy Fried Chicken came into, you know, there, we did not have to, they didn't have to go through anything because it was, it was not a change of use. They kept the structure as is, they just came into the place.
And they went out of business because nobody supported them.
But this, this law, this law doesn't stop, um, doesn't stop a, a bank from opening in, in the village. It would require a variance from the ZBA to open that bank. But what it does do is it therefore, it, it, it makes a difference between, it's now easy to open the credit union, hard to open the bank. Depending, I mean, assuming it's a local credit union with less than five locations is on, for the law, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
But you didn't answer the question of local franchises, Jason, and that is, like.
Because they're quasi, quasi-local businesses.
No, they're not.
Locally owned but nationally supplied.
Locally owned.
Yeah.
And nationally marketed and.
Right.
I, I think they have the same.
The products I'm selling to you, I'm not purchasing locally.
But I would, I would never want to lose True Value Hardware Store and they were in the village.
Right.
I would not want to lose them.
Wouldn't force them out though.
And then it's, then they're not in the village, that's the thing, there are no.
If, if something like that, like Starbucks.
You snap up.
Like, well, well, let's think about Starbucks, but that is in the village. If we put this into place, they're not going anywhere because people support them. So if people are, are continuously going back to that business and supporting it, they're not gonna go out of business and we're not gonna, we're not gonna be at risk of losing.
That's my point, Ariana. That was what I, where I began.
Right, but.
Starbucks is a chain.
But it would be great if Starbucks wasn't in our community and that all of those people supported cafeteria. And mud puddle and.
I think they should have their choice.
I, I think that people can have a choice and if people really wanna go to Starbucks, they can drive to another community and go to Starbucks.
Starbucks is one of the main reasons why this was written.
Yep.
In terms of history. Because we had a private bookstore on that corner.
Yeah, and when I go into the other coffee shops, I can get their trained coffee every time, when I go into Starbucks.
Rebecca, this law has never passed. This law, as Jason said, is being brought up because it was never implemented. And.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have seen businesses come and go, whether they be chain like Kennedy. Or Ariel, which was a terrible loss for this community in terms of an independent bookstore. This law is not going to affect in that way. It is going to limit, but it is not going to affect the economy of the Village of Newpots. In the sense that. Most people in this community, and I bet if we went out and did a survey, we would find, support local businesses and prefer local businesses over. Chains anyway. So I don't see this as a necessary law.
And, and that's why I think people in the community would support this law.
So, let me, let me respond to one point you made. The, this law was not, as you said, really targeted at big bucks stores, um, it was really looking at. What happens if, as, as does happen, right? What happens if Moonlight Cafe gets torn down and, and a Burger King gets opened? Up in that spot? That I think would be a devastating blow to the culture and.
I would think the Bling Board has enough.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, let me, let me make the point, because you're saying, you made the point about spending in the community. Um, you'll see there's a bunch of footnotes, I can give you copies of these studies from all over the country.
I looked this somewhere.
Yeah, they're interesting reading, but the, the one point that comes across no matter where, where in the country it was studied or when it was studied was that. If you have two businesses, a chain and a local, sort of, remember the same thing, in this case, a restaurant, Burger King versus Moonlight. The local business will spend forty-five cents out of every dollar back in the local community, a chain will spend fifteen cents out of every dollar. So our, our lawyers get, uh, cause you're, you're using the local lawyer, you're using local accountant, you, whatever. This is a, this is a preventive law, because we don't have a lot of chains or any chains, or very few chains in the village. It's, I don't wanna see the downtown become littered with chains and have us, have to respond after the fact. This is a kind of fix your house, fix your roof when it's, not when it's raining, fix your roof when it's sunny.
And Jason, I don't disagree with the philosophy, but what, what right now, if we do this. There will be no local doctors because most local doctors are a part of medical companies.
Well, no, there's only have to meet, there, you, you can meet, there are several different ways. You can have, any, you have to have two out of these six.
Right.
Whatever, so as long as they don't, you know, there's one, one method of doing this, they did in Massachusetts, I love, is they said, they didn't ban it, but they said. Basically, the law boils down to you can have a McDonald's here, it just can't look like a McDonald's and it can't serve McDonald's food. Other than that, you can have a McDonald's.
Then if you write this law that way, I could support it.
It does say that as a matter of fact.
No, it doesn't, not clearly.
Because, because what you can't have are standardization.
And we do not have a design criteria for the village.
Two or more of the following.
Well, that's exactly what Bren said here, but it should be noted that if we wanna, this would be an appropriate time to consider design standards right at the village. And I was just in Savannah, um, where they, every, any store that was going in had to get a CMA because. They all needed certificates of appropriateness because it was all historic district. I'm like, oh my god, if we could look like Savannah. But, but that's a, you know, I think that Bren is right and this is.
Oh, I, I absolutely agree, but this is not, this.
And I think this is a piece of that.
After the, this is a part of, of a consequence of having what Bren is recommending. And I would like to see Bren's recommendation and then consider this.
It's a very brief recommendation.
It's just, well, we have one, it's brief. Tom, you haven't said much about anything.
Yeah, she, she has a memo attached.
Yeah, but, but.
Well, I'm, because it's been very difficult for me to get.
Listen, 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 Tom, Tom hasn't said anything yet, let's, let's hear Tom out, go ahead.
I, I support the concept, but I think that it can be refined. Why can it not be refined? We're not voting on it now, we're talking about it. Why can it not be refined? So that we recognize that there are, uh, businesses and potential businesses. Like a Gulf gas station, that might look like a million Gulf gas stations. By the way, it might not look very pretty too, but it's, we have, we have very few gas stations in the village. But they're all gonna be chain or franchise stations. Virtually every bank except for, uh, a, um. You know, a, a very, very local savings operation, uh, which you would not be able to access if you happened to travel to London, by the way. Um, but virtually every bank is going to be a franchise and, or a chain. And there are conceivably other, I'm, I'm thinking of STS on, uh, Thirty Two North.
Yeah.
Uh, STS was a locally owned operation and now it's STS, but it looks virtually the same. The service is virtually the same.
But it is a chain.
Uh, there's, uh, so, how do you, how do we write the, the laws, a local law? To, um, to assure that the village remains both. True to itself and progressive, because progressive does not mean dead.
Right.
It does not mean stopped historically and stuff is going to happen.
And you don't, you don't think, you don't think making chains jump through the extra loop of the ZBA? Is enough of a filter to be, to be, allow those chains their.
They're the ones with the money.
They're impossible.
I think.
Like the gas stations, the banks, do you think there's, that is an effective tool to filter through? As opposed to someone just trying to game the system, you know what I mean?
I think design standards are a way.
If we had design standards, I would, I would.
And I would prefer to see design standards. And we talked about this, we have talked about this and nothing has come of it. I would request. That we have a proposal from the planner on design standards for the Village of Newpots.
Well, there's a, alright, there's already one more on the floor, so hold that thought, what.
This is in regard to, uh, not to a motion.
No, no, I didn't make a motion.
There's no, there is no motion.
I thought you were making a motion, Sam.
No, I'm not, I wanted just, uh, call to our attention something. We all authorized the B three, uh. Plan to go into effect. The B three plan is the one instance that we have where there are significant divine, design standards. Uh, as part and parcel of that, and I think that we could capitalize on the work that's already been done. To determine whether those design standards are appropriate village-wide rather than just in the B three district.
And then, Jason, I think your idea of the ZBA. Would have more weight, at least in my own mind, because. Then if a franchise business came in and. It was too much of, I don't know, if there's such a thing, it's too much of a chain.
You know, you know, no, you know what it was, is one of the things that the ZBA has to take into account is whether an exception to the zoning is in the interests of the community. Things like that, so you could say that a chain, while, while chains are banned as a rule. This chain should be allowed in because of this particular benefit, which is where the bank and the gas station would fall, that's.
I think, but, but you'd be surprised at what else would fall into this category. And most of our doctors in the Village of Newpots.
That I disagree with. Can you point to which two of the, of the definitions they would meet?
They are chains.
But, 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 chain is defined very specifically in this law, uh, actually, it's called formula business.
Right.
To encounter, so you need, I mean, I'll just read it for people at home, there's only five, uh, to the short version.
Well, standardized menu or standardized array of merchandise, I am sure. It does not.
With fifty percent or more of in-stock merchandise from a single distributor, very uniform marking.
Doctors who belong to X health plan all charge the same for shots. That's a chain.
Well.
Trademark or service mark, go into any doctor's office that.
But it has to be identical to five or more other locations, an identical trademark. But it has to be identical to five or more other locations, an identical trademark. On the business itself, not in the merchandise that it's selling.
Jason, if you go into a doctor's office that is part of Pyramid Health Plan, it is identified right there that they are a part of of Health Plan.
Well, I can tell you that that a doctor's office like that, unless it's like, you know, Mcdoctors, was not the intent of the law. And if that was, if that's, if a doctor's office was through, that's, that's
This is the problem with writing these kinds of laws because the exceptions often.
We gotta write laws, that's what we do up here at the table.
No, what we need is the right kind of laws and this community needs design standards and it's needed design standards for fifty years.
Well, no one's disagreeing with you and you got three of your colleagues at the table saying we also need a chain store ban.
I would rather deal with this after I see the design standards.
Well, we'll deal with it one at a time, I guess, but I'm not, I mean, unless a majority of the board thinks that this conversation shouldn't happen unless we have design standards.
We're having the conversation.
I don't know, pass this meeting.
Oh.
That's what I'm saying.
And I, and I think Tom's point is very well taken that in the B three, we already started the process of design standards. And now we need to take that and put an access plan over the entire village, if you will.
So why don't, why don't I, why don't I suggest this, I got a lot of feedback, let me digest it. And I'll come back with round two when it's ready.
Round two coming up.
Unless there's something else.
No.
Or if, you know, if anyone wants to
I'm definitely supportive of this and I would love to see it coupled with design standards or just things like
Sure, yeah, that's one of the things that one would think about is chicken and egg, do we need to do them simultaneously, that kind of thing.
I have some questions and and comments, but I'm gonna save them for the next time we discuss this.
Uh, the chain store? You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't want her meeting to go through it too.
All right, you know what, why don't we do this then, it's nine thirty, why don't we take a ten minute recess since we usually try to do that at nine?
Downward.
Take a breath and then, the chicken also, again, not a long conversation on chickens, just bring up the point.
Not for me.
Yes, obviously, Sally, that's obviously the caveat to everything, not
Well, I'm just saying, we did this once.
I know, but I disagree with one of the provisions and I think that's one of the best.
I'll be back.
So now maybe this one will work for me.
Alright, so the next one is also mine. This is to the background, we passed the law allowing people in the village to keep chickens, I believe, in the fall of twenty twelve. Um, at that time, there was a debate um because of a provision I wrote, which I had one meeting in mind and apparently it could be read both with two ways, so the intent of the board was made clear. Um, anyway, I wrote this revision of that law to fix what I see as a problem in it, which is it doesn't allow enough of the village to keep chickens. Um, and I think providing a solution that that hopefully everyone could get on board with. The the bottom line is this, the law that as it exists now says you must have at least one half acre of land to even have chickens at all. Um, I looked at a parcel list which I provided the board at the time that you're looking at basically one to three percent of the village needs that requirement. Cause we have almost no half acre parcels left and the ones that are usually apartment complexes or larger institutional things like that wouldn't allow them keeping chickens anyway, you know, you're not gonna keep them at town and country. So what this law does is is it it eliminates the discussion of acreage altogether, it takes it out of the law as not being a requirement and replaces that requirement because it's a reasonable requirement to have, to have some space requirement. I think there's a better one and it's already existent in our code, which is to rely on two things, one um the setback requirements. So the same thing is if when you wanna build a shed, there's certain setback requirements from the surrounding properties. If you meet those, you pass one hurdle and the second hurdle is to have a certain number of feet per chicken. And that's different if it's in a coop versus ranging and it's uh according to Cornell you need to think three three feet per chicken, uh three square feet.
In the coop?
In the coop, yeah.
Not the run?
Three square feet, two two to three, but they recommend three square feet in the coop. So, the point of this is just to propose uh for I guess again, like the chain store ban kinda gauges the temperature of the board for making this revision. Any comments or thoughts?
Yes, I do.
You, cause you like it the way it is.
I supported it because we went to a half acre to the minimum number of chickens allowed to be purchased in New York State is six. You cannot have fewer than six.
If you buy them from a store?
Well, that law doesn't care where you get them, you have to have a minimum of six.
I don't, I'm not sure that that's true.
Each chicken needs two to three square feet in a coop. And each chicken, according to Cornell, needs at least ten square feet of running space in a run. A run is different than a coop. And so, that would mean sixty square feet plus the coop. The setbacks that we have would not allow, I don't know of any property in the village of Newport's that you would not.
That has a sixty foot backyard?
Hmm?
That has a sixty, cause I I I actually, I disagree with some of your numbers, but let's assume yours are right.
Well, I've checked on them.
And I've checked on mine, so we'll have to see which one of us looked at the wrong source. But for argument's sake, let's take your numbers as as given.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my point is only that if you do have, if you have sixty feet, or if you wanna keep it just in the coop, you don't have to let them run.
I think that is inhumane to just keep them in a coop.
I, look, this is, look, I don't, all I know is that Cornell says it's done both ways. I don't know enough about the ecology of chickens to know whether they're perfectly comfortable in a coop or whether they need places to run.
Would you be perfectly comfortable in a coop?
I'm not, also don't lay eggs, and I'm not a chicken, so there's there's some fundamental differences here.
When you start laying the eggs, let me know.
Alright, alright, that aside, that aside, that aside, okay, so let's say all the numbers you had Sally are a given, right?
I know they are right.
Okay. All I'm saying is that what you just described should determine whether they can have chickens or not.
To a sixty square feet.
No, no, I'm not, I'm saying that that whatever the square foot, the, and and I'll look up numbers, cause.
And plus the coop, whatever the coop size.
No, I understand, that's my point, my point is this, is that you don't need to talk about quarter acre versus half acre, you can talk about the coop size you need and the 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 run size you need and the setbacks that you need. If your property doesn't match that, you can't have chickens. But if your property does, it opens up to more possibilities for people to do homesteading, is all I'm saying. I think it's, I think it's a more elegant solution to the space problem than tying it to acreage.
Then I think if you wanna be a homesteader, you don't live in the village of Newport's.
What do you think about that, Ariana?
Well, I couldn't homestead outside of the village, um, I guess I, I guess I could. But uh, but and I would, I would never leave my property except by bike or horse. Um, but uh, but I I think that we should be able to homestead in the village. I don't know if this allows us to homestead in the village, um. And and I, and I don't, I I feel, I think, I mean, I'm reading this. Each chicken must be be provided two square feet pervertive kept cooped, plus three square feet exterior space pervertive allowed outdoor, and what Sally's saying is it's ten square.
Right, yeah.
It is ten square feet.
So, so I think.
Well, I got my numbers from somewhere, Sally, so.
I I'm, I'm okay with changing, with getting rid of the acreage, cause if somebody has a point four, five, nine, you know, acreage lot and it's not exactly half an acre.
Or a tiny house in a decent sized corner of the lot, could still make the.
If someone has a house smaller than mine and has a piece of property larger, then uh you know, they they can do it, but um, you know, so I I'm not, I'm not opposed to taking it away from being tied to an acre, but I, but I also think you know, chickens are sold in blocks of six and and I, and I feel like the humane aspect of this was part of why I wanted this law in the first place. Uh, because I think if you're going to eat meat or you're going to eat eggs, that are poultry. Um, that the most humane way to do so is by lovingly raising your chicken and then bringing it to a slaughterhouse. Um, you know, and if you get slaughtered in a kosher manner, then you know.
Hey, the city of Beeden allows you to slaughter them on your own property.
Well.
I could do it.
Yeah?
Bring all the chickens to Tom's house, if you want, uh, he's got old timey acts and uh. I don't, I don't know, it's, it just says setbacks, so I don't think usually you can put things in your front yard.
If if you have a hundred square feet, you could, you could then uh take care of up to twenty chickens, is that right? So if you had uh.
You mean a run?
If you had, if you.
A fenced run?
If you had a fenced run with a coop inside of it.
Mm-hmm.
And you had a a hundred.
The coop would ha, would not be inside it, cause if you need a hundred foot run for twenty chickens.
Hundred feet plus the coop.
You need a hundred feet plus the coop?
No, you need, you need ten per chicken, minimum of six chickens, so you need a sixty square foot run.
But here's my question, they're flock birds.
Hmm?
So you need, for one chicken, you need ten feet, for two, you need twenty?
Yes. It is considered appropriate.
Alright, but you were saying, so you would.
It is considered.
I would wanna look at the numbers also, I I happen just to have a tiny chicken experience.
Then, then let's not debate the numbers, go check them out.
Right, let's check them out.
So, so, a lot of this just depends on on making sure we're all looking at the the correct and the right numbers. Right?
And I have one other thing, um, you struck out at all times, chickens must, chickens must be kept in a fenced in area that includes chicken coop, um.
That might have been a mistake.
Okay.
Cause I don't see why you would want.
Alright, well, that's, that's exactly what we.
Or, or I moved, or I moved, oh, oh, you know, I might have moved it somewhere else.
I was trying to look for it somewhere else and I didn't.
It's not, I couldn't find it.
Alright, then then you know what, I meant, I meant to move it somewhere else, that's probably what it was. Cause no, of course, we wanna keep them cooped at all times.
You know, we're not Cuba since.
Right.
Right.
Or Plains Road. Yeah, alright, so.
We're not a town.
I will, I will provide some some scientific empirical data on ranges for PR ballot.
And I will check again.
And uh.
We, and and you know, I think we had to do that stuff when we were looking at this the first time, so.
It's easy enough to Google.
What did you say, Ariana?
I'm pretty sure we had some of that stuff when looking at this the first time, and I think Cornell was one of the, it said.
I'm just gonna call the the cooperative extension tomorrow, as is that's the.
So, yeah, I think uh, you know, if they could send us something, I'm pretty sure they had a guide. They had like a guide to chicken.
And if I am right, that it is a minimum of six chickens, that needs to be stated in the law. That you cannot have less than six.
Like, it probably should be, yeah. Unless it's state law, then it's a moot point. Anyway, alright, so I'll, 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 I'll check on those things and bring it back, just.
Alright.
I think there's enough traction there for to have another discussion.
The main reason why I, I am supportive of this is because two people have approached me and said that they would have liked to have chickens, but they had a point four something acre parcel, um.
It's it's, it seems more flexible is what I'm, is what I'm thinking.
I also think this is very much like changes in zoning law. I think that we would need to have a clause in here to say that you have talked with your neighbors and they approve.
Like a neighbor notification requirement?
Yep.
So, Jason, I think this, the fenced in area should.
I think it's.
Yeah.
Have something about.
Yeah, because there is stuff about fencing, but it doesn't. No, 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 about a neighbor notification. I thought, I thought there was. I mean, at the very least, I remember us talking about it, so they didn't end in the final version.
Might not have made the final cut. Okay, so I'll take that and and have a cleaner draft shortly and chickens, um, I'm just gonna move, I'm just gonna move number seventeen. The re, this, wait, do we need to do anything besides pass the draft resolution on transmission?
Um, the only thing we need to do is remove the last square house, because it it talks about the PSC meeting on February.
Okay, so with that amendment, I'll move we pass the resolution?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Didn't we just do this?
We did a.
We did the other one.
A different one, same topic. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Rebecca, this one's yours, eighteen, the iPads.
Yes, the, the other one was about the capacity zone, the new capacity zone.
Hmm?
The other one was about the new capacity zone.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna say one thing first. There's never been a point in my life where I actually thought ever that I would have had that discussion about chickens. It's like, I'm sorry, I just have to laugh, it's like, we're talking about chickens, like I never imagined that. We also couldn't have them in Alaska, so that would never. So, um, alright, I've spoken both to Tom. Um, Sally, I kind of mentioned, not really, we didn't really have a discussion about it.
Two months ago.
Yes, um, but the, the one thing that really, um kind of gave me a little more reason to um have a further discussion was the fact that our budget um paperwork was so extensive in terms of the amount of paper that it uses. And um, just the amount of paper that we generate in a month for all of our work um, just feels so excessive and I know Ariana knows firsthand not only how much more um environmentally friendly uh the device is, but it's also so much more productive in terms of organization being able to look back at, um, you know, those ten different proposals that came from the energy audit people without having to have them printed again if you can't find them, but be being able to just go to a file and there they are. Um, because there's so many times we've had items get tabled or what have you, and then it just becomes that bulk of paper all over again. So, that was um the main reason for bringing us this um as a discussion.
I really think we should have had this as a budgetary item when the budget was discussed. Because this has been knocking around and was never offered as an item to be considered in the budget.
Well, I, I have spoken to Nancy and she's feels fine with with us having it within this due budget.
Right, we can do it within this budget, but, well, I know we have a generation thing here.
I, I thought about that and and you saying how you didn't wanna take photos of yourself.
Sally, Ariana will show you how to use it.
It has nothing to do with showing me, I am absolutely, I keep hard copy files. Thank, and I don't get lost, Ariana will tell you, I know where my stuff is.
Yep.
Okay, it's a whole different system that, you know, people develop or don't develop. And I have over my many years developed a very good system of hard copy filing and I find that it much easier to use that way, I'm used to it, I know where my material is. And I'll bet you I can find something faster that this board has acted on in my files than you'll find on your iPad.
Just because you have a card catalog at home, don't, you have to brag about it.
My point is the difference between having it at your fingerprints fingertips or having to run home to get what we're talking about.
No, because I don't, I wouldn't wanna discuss if it were my fingertips at the last night.
Well, it's a tool, and if you, if you find it useful, it's useful, if you don't find it useful, it won't be useful.
Exactly.
I, I, I thought about this obviously because I have an iPad, um, you know, and I remember that the school board had uh, you know, a number of years ago, KT had told me that they had looked at the costs of all the paper generated for board packets and things along those lines versus the cost of iPads and it was you know, it was a significant money saver, um, I would, I would like to see some of those numbers before deciding, just in terms of how much, I mean, I I, you know, I, I, I wanna, I wanna use a word that I don't wanna use. I have complained about uh the amount of paper generated, um, for, you know, board packets and things, that's part of why I have this, but um, and and I also have heard, despite having an iPad, I've heard that there are other tablets that might be better um, or more cost effective, so, so we might wanna do a little research into that.
I'm surprised to hear you say that. In today's uh business news, there were significant reports on how many companies are moving to the iPad and away from every other kind of tablet that that is available.
I mean, I find it to be the most user friendly, but that's personal preference.
It's the most stable, it's the most stable, there are no viruses for it, it's the most user friendly, it's the industry standard.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we were to purchase these, I would not use it, um, simply because I already have all my files on this one, and I also do a lot of organizing that is not directly related to village business, so I would not want to transfer everything, I would end up carrying too. But I wouldn't be opposed to the idea of inheriting an iPad that had all these files already on it.
Exactly, yeah.
And even if you say, say you wanted your, your paper trail and you wanna hop on the same way.
I'll turn over my files.
Well, well, I'm, I'm sure you wouldn't have a problem with that, but, but the idea that it's so easily transferable, or even the idea that it's on a cloud somewhere, I'm pretty sure.
That's what I think, I think the benefit is gonna be long term.
Absolutely.
That it's not gonna be stored in the machine at all, it's gonna be accessible.
Yeah.
Yeah, and syncs up with everything else.
And you're more hackable.
And another, I just wanna bring up.
Hmm?
I know we've been talking about this for months, but another thing that we've been talking about for months is get hiring an IT person. And that is one of the reasons I check with Nancy on a regular basis, asking where we are at with the IT person, it's been at county, she calls, it's been at county, she calls. I have had two different people apply for the position already, starting, I believe in January. Um, and another one last month, and the first person, um just signed on with a company that's very similar to the company that we um contract with now. But this company that he's now working for is specific to governments, there's a number of governments, um, that they reference, that they contract with. Um, and so that's one person, and then I have another person who um designs websites, he does a lot of freelance work, I've known him for years, and um anytime my computer breaks, it goes to him. Um, so, you know, and and I, you know, it's like I was really pushing for an IT person so that all these things can be resolved, also because that's the person who's going to support our systems. Um, and we, I've spoken with Katie and and Nancy, there's two computers within our buildings that are obsolete, the XP. Um, and um I spoke with Brenda about getting a system for Brogan, which would be a docking station, um where she can have multiple screens. And also have the portability of bringing her laptop to the beatings that she has to cover. And with the docking station, she can do her G I F, you know, G I S work and anything else that she needs, she can be networked into the printers. Um, and the same with with the, the one office downstairs that has a computer that's obsolete, that can be used by a number of people. But these are all things that I was hoping our IT person would be working on months ago.
Well, the IT person was supposed to be hired last summer.
It's, and we, they're canvassing the list now.
Is an Ulster County classified position, which we should have known last year.
Yeah.
Part-time is also classified, so it's not as though no, we don't know these things and and a person applying from the outside if they haven't passed the test and they're not on the list, they're not eligible, it's as simple as that.
Well, this, this is a whole other conversation that once we get.
Well, but Rebecca brought it up.
Oh, absolutely, and it's an interesting one, one worth having. But there's a motion, did you second?
No.
Rebecca?
There was no motion.
I, I moved, I moved Rebecca's motion.
You moved Rebecca.
Alright, alright, somebody move something.
Okay.
Okay?
I would like to make a motion to purchase, um, iPad systems for the village trustees.
Who would use them?
Who would use them, as well as the mayor, the mayor would use them.
Well, Ariana's not gonna use hers, I'm certainly not using one.
So, I'll second that.
Well, I, I guess my question is, um, you know, would we, would we only get three if the three of you would use one, or would we get five? And then they would be there, or should we purchase the other two when?
In the next budget.
Well, well, when the per, when the other trustees would use them, because they're gonna be the latest model as opposed to what's current.
But I think.
I think, I think that's, obviously that would happen.
I think your point, Ariana, that we don't have the information we need as to the appropriate iPad to buy, because there is a great cost.
There's only one option.
There's only one option, there's multiple.
Oh, right, right, it's, it's just the iPad, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking that.
Oh, okay, oh.
Not a different.
There are new iPads out which are much less expensive, I don't know whether they're as good as. There are new iPads out which are much less expensive, I don't know whether they're as good as.
I mean, I, I have the iPad wallet, the first generation iPad and part of why I didn't get the second generation is cuz it was two hundred dollars more and it said one of the, one of the main features of it was for graphics and photos. And I was like, I'm not using it for graphics or photos, um.
So I don't think.
So I didn't feel like I needed that.
Alright, um.
May I suggest that we need to have a better recommendation as to what kind of iPad? I mean, it may be that we should have graphic ability or.
Well, what, what did you, you got the prices on something specific, what?
Um.
So that was, that would be the one that you were making the motion for?
I mean, we didn't have a, I mean, Nancy gave a ra, a round number, but I, it was an unofficial price, right?
Okay, so, so do you wanna withdraw your motion and bring this back with another?
I, I could, I mean.
It, it's up to you.
Um, I know that, that in terms of what's available now, they pretty much run, um, in the six hundred range and, um, for like a keypad, um, support system, that's around a hundred. Five, five to six for the machines, there are some smaller ones that are in the three range.
Now, I don't think you can buy an iPad for three, you can buy a tablet for three, various tablets.
Or maybe the minis.
The minis, yeah.
But I, I, I mean, you know, we're talking about this, a mini is not.
But what are we doing, what are we doing tonight?
Could I make a recommendation that, that, um, that we, we could pass a motion tonight that would limit the cost.
Like a not to exceed?
Yeah, not to exceed.
Or not to exceed, so if it's six hundred plus one hundred for the keyboard, not to exceed seven hundred dollars.
I mean, I, we're not in a, in a rush, so I don't see why we can't wait till next meeting when we have concrete numbers to work with.
I agree.
And I'm also, I would also be curious to know, you know, even if it was round numbers, how much it would save us in paper costs.
So Rebecca, so you're gonna withdraw your motion then and you're gonna get that information?
May I take the question?
I think you're right.
I mean, I'm ready to vote yes on, on this and I know Tom and Rebecca are too, so I think this is really just getting information for the, for the board.
Yeah, and al- also with, in terms of the rate, um, we're looking at your standard commercial rates, um, we would get a government discount and also, right, and also we would not be paying sales tax.
Then you also should look to see if they're available on state bid.
I believe they would be.
And then.
I would be surprised that they're not on state.
Well, right, but she's just said the commercial, we'll get a discount, that state bid is much lower.
Sure, that's fine.
Is it, is?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm, I'm asking, okay. Um, alright.
I'll move.
Uh, I'll move the New York class.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
I'm doing, I authorize it by resolution that the mayor be authorized to sign.
Wait, wait, Sally, um.
That's why I pulled it off the consent agenda.
Alright, so I withdraw, I withdraw my motion, withdraw those votes. Sally, do you wanna make the, the motion you wanna make?
Okay. I move that the board resolve to authorize the mayor to sign the amendment dated as of March fourteen, two thousand and twelve to the New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System Municipal Corporation Agreement as amended and restated as of April twenty-three, two thousand and twelve.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um.
Jason, can you sign this please?
We have one twenty-five to do.
Yep, that's coming next. Um, I'll move that we authorize the payment plan as for the recommendation of the deputy treasurer.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to adjourn?
Uh, nope, uh, I move that we accept the fire department annual elections, uh, the following.
The consent agenda.
We did that consent, yeah.
Was it, number three, oh, that was just added, sorry.
I think we did everything.
No, we have number nine that we pulled from the consent agenda, because it has an hour, it's the first week.
Um, and I actually got a message, um, a text from a member of the council. Um, she said that they can definitely start all the church street activities after two P M, so they don't disrupt the bonanza.
And I was speaking with Juju a couple of times and, um, we all, I discussed it with her and then I called her again prior to the meeting to make sure that whoever else she's spoken to would be finding that. And, um, basically what's gonna happen, even if, uh, the synagogue is running late, there's not going to be any disruption prior to them actually done.
So, I'll move the approval conditional on the, on nothing starting until two P M.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wow, ten oh six, that's a.
Sorry, camera. Pardon?
I made it. I was concerned that I might not make it.
I was starting to fade down.